City Council meeting. Just a quick reminder, if you did not vote, the polls are open and ready for you to show up and make sure that you participate in the voting process today. So, thank you all for being here today. We, the meeting is officially called to order at 8:33 a.m. We will start with our Chaplain prayer and pledges, and we have Gary Jenkins here today to lead us in both. Please stand.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
And Council members, everyone here in the chamber. We greet you with love in Jesus' name. Will you pray with me? Precious Father in heaven, in the name of Jesus, we bow before you, seeking your face and your counsel, asking you for wisdom and guidance for our council members, our city administration. We pray, Father, that you bless San Angelo. And Father, we thank you for living in a city that is a wonderful place to live and work. And we pray, Father, for divine guidance, Lord, to bless our council and help them to do those things that are pleasing in thy sight. We pray, God, for all of our city officials, our chief, assistant chiefs, and all of the men and women of the San Angelo Police Department, our fire department, all of our first responders. And we pray, God, that something can be done so that our city will maintain the safety that it has at this time. We pray, God, for peace, and we pray, God, for Israel. We pray for the innocents in Palestine or in the Gaza Strip, the Palestinians. And Lord, in war is always the innocent people that suffer the most. So, we pray, God, that there will be at least a temporary pause to get the hostages out. We pray, Father, for peace in the Middle East, and we pray, God, that your divine will be done in earth as it is in heaven. And if you do these things, we'll ever be mindful to give you and you alone the praise, the thanksgiving, and the glory. Let everybody say amen.
Amen.
God bless you. Will you repeat after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. We will now move into the proclamations and recognitions for the, for today. And we will start with the National Adoption Day. Please come forward. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Good morning. You're good. You're good. All children deserve a safe place to live and grow, and each year, many Texas children find a forever home thanks to adoptive families. In Tom Green County, there are many children currently in foster care awaiting a forever family to bring them home. During the month of November, communities across the country come together to observe National Adoption Month to encourage and complete the adoptions of children in foster care and to celebrate the families who choose to adopt. The city of San Angelo recognizes National Adoption Month in support of the adoptive families here in our own community and encourages others to open their hearts to children in need of loving and permanent homes. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the city of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim November 2023 as National Adoption Month in San Angelo, Texas, and call on all citizens to remember the children and families who have joined their lives to the miracle of adoption, open their hearts and minds to the idea of opening their own homes to children in need, and congratulate the new families to be formed during National Adoption Month. Who would like to receive the proclamation and speak, please?
Thank you for this proclamation for National Adoption Month. We are very thankful for this opportunity to be able to spread awareness for the foster children here in our community. These are our children, these are our kids in our community, and we are very thankful for all of our homes here in Tom Green County and the surrounding areas that have been willing to become foster parents or adoptive parents. So, this month, we are just thankful that we're able to celebrate this and celebrate our families that are going to be adopting soon.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak? Our next proclamation is for Veterans Day, and I believe Harry and Larry would like to come forward and join me in this proclamation. And any of you in the audience that are here to join, please come forward. The city of San Angelo is extremely pleased and honored to pay tribute to our distinguished veterans of the armed forces and active-duty reserve and national guard personnel of the United States of America for their service and sacrifice to our great nation. These brave men and women in military uniform serve our nation with honor, distinction, and dedication in war, international conflicts, and during times of peace. Our nation's well-being, prosperity, and sense of peace is largely due to the sacrifices made by our men and women in the military. The courageous veterans in our community have earned our everlasting gratitude for serving our nation with devotion and love of country. During their service and afterwards, veterans and active-duty personnel contribute to the San Angelo community, Texas, and our nation by offering skills, education, leadership, and dedication learned in the armed forces. Furthermore, let us also honor the families of armed service members missing in action, which continue to endure uncertainty of the fate of their loved ones unaccounted for. Finally, may we praise the families of all those who have served quietly with little recognition for their undying commitment to and support of their veterans. In celebration of this day, as we proudly wave our flags, watch holiday parades, and sing patriotic songs, let us stop for a moment to remember the sacrifices that our women and men in the armed forces have made for us so that we can enjoy the privileges and freedoms of our great nation. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the city of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim November 11, 2023, as Veterans Day in San Angelo, Texas, and ask citizens to remember with eternal respect the service and sacrifices of all our former and current active-duty personnel of the armed forces of the United States of America. Thank you all.
On behalf of the veterans, active-duty personnel, and their families in our community, I would like to thank Mayor Gunter and the citizens of San Angelo for acknowledging the service and sacrifices we have made to secure the promises of our forefathers. The respect and support we receive in the city is one of the reasons many of the veterans decided to stay here. For those of us who are fortunate enough to interact with students and cadre from Goodfellow Air Force Base, we always take the opportunity to sell our city, letting them know what a great military town San Angelo is. This proclamation is proof of that support, and we are very thankful for it. Thank you.
Harry, you want to stay down here? Our next proclamation is America Recycles Day. So, all of you who are here, and there looks like there's a lot of you, please come forward. Come on around. You can come on this way. You can come up beside me. And you can go further on down that way. You can stand here. You can stand here. Be right there. Okay. On American Recycles Day, we promote the benefits of recycling for our health, environment, and economy, and we renew the efforts all of us can take to meet the obligations we have to future generations. By manufacturing and packaging more recyclable products, producing less waste, and reusing precious resources, we can cut greenhouse gas emissions and create a new, good, paying jobs. America Recycles Day began in Texas to spread information about recycling in the state and encourage more people to recycle their waste. They proposed the conversion of Texas Recycles Day to American Recycles Day, and American Recycles Day was born where over 40 states participated. Thanks to the work by the Recycling Coalition and the American Recycles Day events, recycling has increased from 7% in the 1960s to 32% today. We all have a role to play, and we must build an economy and environment that prioritizes reducing, reusing, and recycling materials. As a community, we can focus on creative innovation and encourage citizens to think outside the box and find new ways to reduce, reuse, and recycle. Let's all rally behind disposing of waste in the proper bins whenever possible, reusing containers, composting food, and using products made with recycled materials. San Angelo is a remarkable community worth preserving and safeguarding where humans and nature can coexist in harmony and champion the sustainability of our environment. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the city of San Angelo, do hereby proclaim November 15, 2023, as America Recycles Day, and together, we can create a cleaner and greener country that secures our future for generations to come. Okay, so Charlotte's going to speak, and then we're going to allow some of you to speak, and then we'll have a picture, okay?
Sweet. So, we want to thank you, Mayor Gunter, city council, for your support. We just returned from the State of Texas Alliance for Recycling Conference, where we were recognized for their TILA awards, which we're very excited to share with you guys. We brought back the extraordinary recycling event award for our work on our tire projects. Harry, due to your inspiration. And then we won the Public Information and Outreach Award as well. So, a great testimony to the community in San Angelo, and we dedicate this to all the heroes that come out and help at all the events and everyone that supports reducing, reusing, and recycling, especially the unsung heroes that pick up trash every day that we never know about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have, do you still would like to speak? Would you like to speak? Okay, so, do you want to put it up here? Okay, let's do this.
Can you take my paper out?
Sure. Okay, there you go. And you're going to speak into this, okay? So, we can hear you.
Good morning, Mayor, city council, and guests.
Good morning.
I'm Cash Coit, president of the Keep San Angelo Beautiful Junior Ambassador Youth Advisory Council. Our mission is to create awareness and inspire our community by educating and empowering the young leaders of San Angelo to foster a love for the environment. We recently participated in the Blackshear Heights Family Fall Festival and inducted 35 new K-SAB junior ambassadors who took the pledge to be litter-free. I hope all students kindergarten through 12th grade join us tomorrow night from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. for our very first Youth Advisory Council meeting. We will be watching five short films about our environment, taking the pledge to be litter-free, and there will be prizes. We are also hosting our first event, which is our recycled art contest. The theme for the contest is reduce, reuse, and recycle. All students kindergarten through 12th grade can enter. There is still time to turn in your recycled masterpiece at the North Branch Library on Chadborn starting today until Monday, the 13th. All art pieces will be judged on November 15th to the American Recycles Day. Prizes will also be awarded. Today, we want to share with you a gift that my third-grade class gave Miss Charlotte. It is a book called 26 Ways to Keep San Angelo Beautiful, and she had it published so we can share our gift with the community of San Angelo. These are hard of the press, and we hope you enjoy them.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak? Wait a second, let me go first.
Hi, I'm Stacy. I'm Ella's mom. This is Ella with Ella Saves the Oceans Project, and she wants to remind you to continue to recycle. She just finished a project called Recycle Beyond the Bag, where she collected almost 800 pounds' worth of plastic film to be recycled. And because of that achievement, Trex, which is a company that uses plastic to make new and improved materials like cooking and outdoor furniture, they gave her a bench in her honor that's going to be placed at Fort Concho Elementary, which is where she went to elementary school. And that's how all of this started, with a project called Tryz Project when she was in second grade, and now she's in ninth grade. So, yeah.
Who else wants to come forward? Come on. You want to tell us your name?
Jacob.
Okay, Jacob, you're on.
So, today, I am here to be talking about recycling. Soda cans, tin foil, and even your pots and pans are made of aluminum. You can recycle aluminum over and over again to make new products. Many plastics are not biodegradable, but they can be reused or recycled. Recycled plastics can be used to make new bottles, furniture, and carpet. Recycling cardboard saves landfill space. You can also reuse your cardboard for storage, your compost pile, or shred it for pet bedding. Recycling paper helps save our trees, energy, and water. Recycled paper can be made into new things, like boxes, newspapers, and even notebooks. Recycled glass can be used for new bottles, jars, jewelry, and even roads. Helps save the earth's natural resources by recycling glass. Compost is a mixture of organic materials like wood chips, leaves, and vegetable scraps. Worms and other insects help to decompose them, mix into nutrients for the soil.
Good job, Jacob. Thank you. Who else wants to come forward? Do you want to come forward? You want to tell us what's on your poster? What does your poster say? Keeps San Angelo Beautiful? Okay, and your posters, sir? What does your poster say? You want to tell us what that means? No? We get it then. Okay, we got it. Yes, ma'am. You want to say something? Well, come on. Okay, there you go. Can you speak into this? Okay. And your name is?
Casey.
Casey? Okay, you're on. It's scary, isn't it? Yeah. So, what are you thinking that we need to know? We need to recycle?
Yeah.
And does that help keep San Angelo beautiful?
Yes.
And how does that happen?
If we throw our trash, we have to reuse it.
Yep, so we want to make sure we reuse our trash, right? Well, thank you for being here today. Anybody else want to come forward? Are we done? Harry, you want to come forward?
Thank you, Mayor. Had the opportunity probably five or six years ago to help resurrect Keep San Angelo Beautiful. Did not realize how far this particular organization has come. This group of young people here has produced a book that talks about recycling, trash pickup, the environment. And quite honestly, I'm going to try to see if I can get all of the signatures of all the young people that were in there. It's a great book. Cash has got one in his hand. He was instrumental in making this work. This is the next generation, folks, of people, young people, that will help keep San Angelo beautiful, keep trash off the street, help recycle. They've got some challenges ahead of them, but because of the early start that they've got, I believe that they will be very successful. And in 20 years, this community will look better than it does today. So, thank you. I appreciate everybody out there. I know we've got some things going on with Butts Recycling, and I certainly appreciate what Charlotte and her board has done. We're going to make this work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's get together for a picture. So, come on. All right, we're going to tighten up a bit, so everybody get very close and turn kind of sideways so everyone will fit into the picture. Some of you can step back a little bit closer to me. Okay? There you go. Make sure you can, you come over here so he can see right there. Okay? Can you get us all in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Family, have you all got your pictures? Everybody good? Okay, thank you so much, everyone. You can sit down now or get on the bus or... Or you can stay here with us all day.
Yes.
You want to do that? Yeah, okay. Okay, that's my idea.
Go Fort Concho.
Yeah.
Okay, we will now move into the public comment section of our agenda. If you choose to speak today, please state your name and address or SMD area. Each citizen can speak just once per item unless asked to comment by council. Public comment is three minutes unless extended by council or translation services. A proponent or opponent may speak five minutes unless extended by council or translation services. Council has no obligation to respond to comments or questions from the public. Any response from a member of the city council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information, recitation of existing policy, and directing staff to place a subject on a future agenda. At this time, do I have individuals in the audience who would like to come forward and offer public comment? If so, please do so now.
Good morning. My name is Nelda Nalan. I reside in Tommy Hebert's District 1. I'm here today to thank you because what a difference a year makes. I want to publicly thank our city manager, Mr. Valenzuela, our ADA coordinator, Teresa James, for the great strides that have been made on our, to better our disabled community. Are we there yet? No, but we're on our way. And so, to our mayor and to our city council members, thank you so much for your efforts. Number two. The other priority I have is water. And so, I was at a city council meeting, and I heard about the foresight that you had on securing water for San Angelo, and I want to thank you for those efforts. I want to thank Councilman Larry Miller for explaining to me the project, that what you're doing in West Texas, how you're going to bring the water here, and how you're going to secure it in the future because we can't exist without it. Finally, because I read in our little paper that maybe we might have a little problem in another area, I want to address my concern about security. Unfortunately, I've had to call the police because somebody decided they wanted to come visit me without my knowledge in the backyard. Some of my neighbors up and down in this area have had to call the police. And we must have them. It's very important that we have, that we can, that people that want to join our police department, that are trained, well-trained, and that it's important that we keep those people. It doesn't do us any good if we train people and then they leave us. I know that funds are always short. Maybe we should have raised taxes. Maybe we should have done more. But what I'm asking you today is, everybody, take a deep breath. I know it can get contentious, both sides, but let's try to do what's best for our police department and see if we can be sure that they want to continue living here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. More public comment, please come forward.
Good morning, city council members, Mayor and city manager, Valenzuela. I'm Mike Burnett, single member District 1, speaking to you today as Chair of the Concho Valley Homeless Planning Coalition. Since we are in November, we are now in the midst of preparation and implementation of the End of the Warmth Inclement Weather Protocol to keep our homeless neighbors safe. From our 2023 point-in-time count, we have approximately 200 homeless individuals that we will need to try to provide some sort of shelter when the weather gets bad this winter. Our plan for this winter places more focus on the use of a congregate shelter in an effort to house neighbors more effectively and efficiently. From the time I spoke with you at this time last year until now, we've had quite a bit of interagency cooperation providing resources for end of the warmth. This also includes the city of San Angelo providing the Carl Ray Johnson Rec Center for use as a congregate shelter. As we look forward to the coming winter, we are glad that the Rec Center is still available and that we have had fruitful conversations about the temperature activation point to use it. From our conversation and researches with other regions, we've agreed upon a new activation point, 36 degrees with a precipitation forecast of 50%, precipitation forecast overnight, or 32 degrees with no precipitation forecast. This should allow us to move more people into safety as the temperatures drop. I would also like to point out that because of the city's involvement, we've created a working group to move the Salvation Army Emergency Shelter back online sooner rather than later. I think we all know the importance of this shelter during the winter and throughout the year. It's because of the city's involvement that we, the coalition and the Salvation Army, have a very workable plan to utilize this shelter at some point during the winter. At the point when it comes online, we'll be able to move the congregate shelter for, into the warmth from the Johnson Rec Center to the Salvation Army. I feel like we've had some very honest and open conversations about the role of Salvation Army in our community, and I'm glad to say that the current Salvation Army leadership agrees and is working to that end. Next week is the Annual Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Next week is the Annual Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Several of our partner agencies will be promoting awareness and advocating for our low-income and homeless neighbors. Contra Valley Community Action Agency has some events planned for next week, including a homeless vigil and a homeless roundtable, which I hope some of you on the council will participate in. Just as we have seen the success of moving forward on the Salvation Army shelter, having city involvement in our work to help our homeless neighbors is crucial. We are still hoping that a homeless task force will be created and that the city will have a hand in that work of that body. I hope that on the next council agenda, we can have a longer time to discuss the work being done in San Angelo for our homeless community. It is important for our community to work together in creating real solutions for our homeless neighbors. A working partnership with the social service providers and with our local government will help make real change possible sooner rather than later. I believe in the power of community working together. And in San Angelo, we have the opportunity to prove that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I have the list of the hunger and homeless events. And I'll just leave it with Teresa.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. More public comment?
Sorry, I'm short. Good morning. My name is Sarah Negavetich. I'm a member of single, symbol, single, mhm. Single-member District Six. Less than two weeks ago, I had such a wonderful, unique opportunity to see our government in action in the very best way. I was able to tour the Old Salvation Army Emergency Shelter along with city employees, elected officials, other citizens. And I saw what happens when you have the right people in the room. And what happens is things get done. More than just conversations about how we're going to get the shelter actually open, real action took place right there. The people who needed to make the call about what absolutely had to happen, they were able to be there and make that call. The very next day, we had those gas lines turned back on. Cleanup crews are hard at work as we speak. Cots have arrived. HVAC systems are getting repaired and money is being allocated. Actions taking place and all because the people with the drive to get it done were in the same room as the people with the means to get it done. Now, for the past several months, we've been asking for a homeless task force to be added to the agenda. We've met with some members of this council. We've had conversations with city staff. And we've explained what and why we want to have this task force. It's because when the right people are in the room, things get done. Our city has a homeless problem and we have to do something about it. Now, we, we super appreciate the shelter. It's going to help so many of our citizens right here in San Angelo. But the shelter is a Band-Aid solution to a problem that requires surgery. For years, our nonprofit community has been working so hard to help our neighbors. And we have had wonderful success stories. But we are like Sisyphus, pushing that rock back up the hill only to watch it roll back down again because we need the right people in the room to get it done. So, I'm here once again asking to please, please to put a homeless task force on the agenda. Let's work together to create long-term solutions that work towards solving homelessness and poverty in our community. I've seen it happen. I know we can do it. We just need to get all the right people in the room.
Thank you. Further public comment? Please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Chrisanthemum Crenshaw. I live at 2506 Sweetbrier Drive in San Angelo. And I've seen firsthand the effects of homelessness on our local businesses and community members, including their children and their pets. I have recently witnessed a homeless neighbor struggling with the decision of whether to eat lunch or to give their food to their dog. I believe that no one should have to make this choice. Providing shelter is the start, but it is not the finish. Shelter alone will not feed the hungry, clothe the naked, nor will it aid the ill. Homelessness is complex and its causes and effects are a study in themselves. And every aspect of this serious issue deserves the attention of all of us in this room. As someone who's experienced the loneliness and the desperation that comes from not having a safe, secure, and sanitary place to sleep, and as someone who has lost a dearest loved one from the effects of homelessness, I share the burden of my neighbors, especially those out in extreme weather conditions. I also understand that the weight of homelessness should not fall only on the shoulders of those experiencing it. We all play a role in this city and we should all take ownership of that role. I encourage everyone in this room to embrace their role with enthusiasm and pride because that is what really makes change. It is my belief that by supporting our fellow community members experiencing homelessness, we will be bettering San Angelo for everyone. One way we can do this is by prioritizing continuous dialogue about this extreme problem. A homeless task force facilitated by this council would ensure that these vital conversations take place. Together, we can all be a part of the solution. But that can only happen when all of our voices are heard. Thank you.
Further public comment?
Good morning. My name is Sydney Timmer. I live in Councilwoman Gonzalez's district. As you've heard multiple times, homelessness is really important to us. And that's something that we really, really would like your help on. And so, as Mike mentioned, Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is coming up. And so, I did want to elaborate on why that is such an important step that San Angelo is taking and that it is a very simple and easy way that you can educate yourselves and get involved. I know sometimes homelessness seems like a very insurmountable issue. And the system can sometimes be so broken that you don't know where to start. But these are some easy ways that you can do that. And so, I wanted to personally invite yourselves, as well as your families and other members of San Angelo to come to them. Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is a nationwide initiative aimed at raising awareness about the critical issues of hunger and homelessness that affect communities all over the country. It does run from November 11 through the 18th. So, we're just about a week away. And we are going to have a series of impactful activities and discussions and campaigns to try to educate and engage the community. It is an opportunity for organizations, as well as communities and individuals, to come together to address the pressing challenges that hunger and homelessness present while also recognizing the efforts that are already happening. As you've heard between our work and Salvation Army, things are happening. But we are hitting a wall of, we need the community's support as well as city government. Our week is going to kick off on November 13th. That's Monday at 7:00 PM with a homeless vigil. There is a study done by the University of Washington and The Guardian that shows in the five-year span, deaths among homeless neighbors jumped by 77%. Having a home is not just a luxury or convenience. It is actually life-saving. And so, these are family members that are dying on the streets from very curable illnesses just by being exposed by the, to the elements. Something that I think is very important for each of you to come to would be the homeless symposium that's happening on Tuesday, November 14th at 9:00 AM. This is going to be an opportunity for us to take a hard look at the homeless situation in our community and search for solutions. You will actually be able to hear from neighbors that have experienced homelessness and that are experiencing homeless currently, as we have recently built an advocacy board of people that have gone through this. To wrap up our week, we're having a Quiz for a Cause at the Marshall Pint at 7:30 where we're hopefully going to be able to raise some funds to mine those gaps of services. And then, lastly, there's going to be a free movie showing on November 16th at 6:30 PM at the Brooks and Bates. And it's a film that shows a family of six that were recently, their home was taken away from them. And so, it highlights a different view of homelessness. So, we hope that you'll join us that week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further public comment? Yes?
I'd like to address something that Ms. Nalan brought up a little while ago. First of all, Ms. Nalan, thank you for the kind comments. I do appreciate that and we appreciate that. You mentioned public safety. Public safety is paramount to our community. And I want to make sure that everybody understands that we really do hold our firefighters or police officers in very high regard. With the council's support, I've been meeting with the Police Office Coalition leadership for the past several weeks. And we're very close to resolution. We'll be returning to Meeting Confer here pretty soon. And we feel that hopefully by January, we'll have this whole thing resolved. So, I just want to make sure that I, I made that clear. I know there's been a lot out there in social media. But on our part, we really want to get this thing done. So, we're very close. And I just want to make sure that I, that I made that very clear. Okay? Thank you again, ma'am.
Further public comment?
Good morning. My name is Tracy Pyatfox. I have a licensed peace officer-protected address as per the Tom Green County Appraisal District. I'm also an owner of a business in the 2600 block of MLK. And I'm here to speak to you. I appreciate you, Mr. Valenzuela, addressing the peace officer issue. And that's my concern. We are facing a mass exodus of police officers. And we don't have until January because they're leaving soon. They're leaving very soon. I have officers that reach out to me on a daily basis. And for members of the public who are not aware, the police department has been consistently paid 10% to 12% under comparable cities for many, many years. And of recent years, up to 20%. And these officers who are set to leave are leaving to other agencies because they're seeking a living wage. Another concerning thing about their exodus is that many of those officers who are leaving are the ones that are providing off-duty security at SAISD campuses. And those campuses, by law, have to be protected by peace officers. So, my question is, what is the contingency plan for public safety when the mass exodus begins, which is very soon and that we don't have until January? And then, also, Mr. Valenzuela, you, you did state the tax cap as being a contributing factor to the wage issue that we have here in the city. And, and I do respect that. But that particular 3.5 tax cap was put into Texas in 2019. So, I want to know what the excuse has been for the city from 2018, 17, 16, 15, 14, and so forth. We have to do better to have public safety. And we've seen children here from schools represented. They deserve to be safe. Your business owners, your citizens deserve to be safe. So, what is the plan for public safety once this mass exodus begins? I'd also like to say that I'm here representing other officers who cannot speak because they're in uniform and their spouses, who are too afraid to come forward today.
Thank you. Thank you, Tracy.
Hi, my name is Kim Spooner. And I live in the Capitol Heights District. I've, I am here to support Tracy and to support the police officers for higher pay. Public safety is paramount to me. It's paramount to my children, who are now adults, to my grandchildren. I work in a very busy business. And I always thank the police officers who come in when they shop. I live alone. I've had somebody break into my backyard. I've had to call the police for that. Two doors down from me, just recently, I had a massive drug bust at the corner house where I live. And I appreciate the police officers who have provided safety in my community. And, and when I had to call the police for the person who broke in my backyard. I am concerned. I saw these kids today, you know, just recently, there was a threat to SAISD, which was then said to be an old threat. But the reality is, these crimes are being committed in our schools and against our children. And public safety is paramount. You talked about how San Angelo, you want it to be a safe place. The best way to make it a safe place is to have public safety officers who are paid comparably to other cities in our, in our state to let them stay and to protect us, to protect the vulnerable, to protect the homeless, to protect children, to protect the elderly, to protect businesses. I mean, we had a crime that resulted in a murder at a business downtown a couple of years ago. We need to keep our area safe. And one way to do that is to keep our police officers and our safety officers here in San Angelo. So, I, I wrote to you, I wrote to you, and I wrote to my other, Tommy Hebert. And I got a response from you. So, thank you for that. And you did say that you do keep the public in high regard. And one way to do that is just to pay them. It's expensive. It's expensive to pay rent, to pay mortgage, groceries, diapers. It's expensive. Keep them safe by paying them more. And it just would, it would help all of our communities to pay them a little, just to pay them comparable to other areas in our state. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
May I, may I, Kim? I just feel like it just needs to be addressed again. When I say January, this is in conversation with the Police Officers Coalition leadership. And they, they understand what we're doing. And nothing happens immediately. We know that we go into Meeting Confer discussions here very quickly, probably as soon as next week, just to revolve some of the, resolve some of the details that need to be resolved. And I'm very confident that a deal will be done and we'll have the contract completed. It's not a matter of dragging feet. It's just a matter of, there's a process that is followed under Meeting Confer. And again, we do hope that everything goes very well. I'm pretty confident, well, from the conversations that I've had with the Police Officer Coalition leadership. So, again, it is paramount. Safety for our community is absolutely paramount. And this is something that will be resolved. I know questions can be raised about the past, why it wasn't something done in the past. I know the city council, we look at a budget every year. And we want to make sure that we, we're conservative in the way that we do our budget. And we have been doing that every year. We've been trying to address pay along with infrastructure. Everything that the city is responsible for, we work very diligently to make sure that we address. But public safety is paramount. It will happen. It's going to take just a little bit longer. But again, by January, I'm very hopeful that a contract will be signed and we can move forward. So, thank you again for your comments and we do appreciate you.
Further public comment?
Good morning, council members. My name is Tashi Lagon. I appreciate your words, Mr. Valenzuela. But I came, so I'm going to still speak if that's all right. I am here to support just the previous speakers and just the police department here in San Angelo. I am responsible for the social media famous cookie at this point. I'm a business owner here in San Angelo. And I have strong roots here. I actually grew up in Houston, but I've been here for seven or eight years. My husband moved me here against my will, but I have grown to absolutely love this city. I don't think he could pay me to go back to Austin at this point. And I say that to say that public safety, of course, is vital and important to all of us. I think that, I, I do want to address also that just the morale of our police officers, anyone who is well-compensated and feels comfortable getting to work every day and, and just that they're supported by their, their superiors and their community is going to do a better job. They're going to have high morale and high, just job satisfaction. And I think that if we have a police department and a fire department where people want to be, where they just, you know, have great coworkers and feel well-compensated, I think that's just going to be better for, for all of us here in San Angelo. I look forward to our police officers and firefighters being better compensated and getting to that, that even mark where comparable cities are paying their police officers. I do also want to share just a quick little personal story. A few years back in Austin, I was driving to work and just unfortunately passed by a very serious accident. And I won't describe what I saw. It was, it still haunts me. That was nine or 10 years ago. And I just think about the first responders that have to kind of walk into those situations. And that reminds me, you know, every time I have to, you know, think about calling the police or hear a siren, I just, I kind of think about that. And I just have a healthy respect for that job. I think even on my best day, I could not do what they do on their worst days. So, I just want to acknowledge them. And, and I'm looking forward to that, that pay increase and so that we can keep them here and keep them healthy and happy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Further public comment? Seeing none, we will, I don't know. If you're going to come forward, come forward. Yes, please.
Hello. My name is Margaret Mendez. And I reside at 3652 Lake Drive. I am a member of an officer that is for the San Angelo Police Department. And I just want to let you all know that, I mean, I thank you. And with much consideration, I would hope and I pray that you all... And with much consideration, I would hope and I pray that y'all do consider to give them a raise and keep them here. I can't imagine 20 officers trying to walk out. When I was my personal, one day, somebody tried to break in my house. And the first thing when I called 911 is when they immediately came, it wasn't just one, it was three officers. How frightened was I, me and my children? They told me, get on the floor. The person was trying to bust open my windows. My children were scared. I can't imagine an officer going into a house and not having backup while 20 more officers are gone, and only one can attend. Is it fair for one officer to come in, or is it better for them to be more than one? I think it's more to have them here and try to, instead of them looking employment somewhere else. I pray for my, my family members that are in PD, and all of them, they've become my family. And I hope and take consideration that y'all will, you know, increase their pay and have them here because losing one, you know, they wake up every day facing crime. And San Angelo has a lot of crime. We just don't hear about it, you know? But there is. And if we could try to keep our officers here and try to fund them better, we would, you know, San Angelo is a great place. I've been here most of my life. And I want to tell y'all, thank y'all so much for everything that y'all do. And God bless y'all. And please take consideration of giving officers a better pay. Thank you. Have a great.
Thank you for coming forward. Further public comment? Seeing none, we will end that portion of the agenda. So we will move on to the consent agenda. I'll start with Larry. Would you like to pull an item from the consent agenda? L is being pulled. Karen?
No, ma'am.
Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Harry?
Nothing.
Tom?
Nothing to pull.
Tommy? With that, may I have a motion for approval of all items on the consent agenda with the exception of item L? Does someone?
Second.
Any public comment concerning item L, which is considered, I mean, all, the consent agenda is approved. Seven to zero. We will move on to reading item L. Consider resolution approving paid time off for city employees who contribute a fair share or greater to the United Way campaign.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning, Veronica.
Morning.
Larry, did you have questions?
Yeah, we've had conversations about this. A number of us were surprised that this came up so quickly. And we had a, actually, we talked about some, I believe, improvements on how we can handle this. And Teresa's pretty well-versed in what we, rather have her talk about it than me confuse the issue.
Okay, so the issue that was brought to me regarding this item is that it, it continues on until a resolution is passed to remove this from the rule. And there's concern about the ongoing nature of it. One of the proposals that we have to, to solve that is to modify the resolution in the packet today to make it effective just for this fiscal year. And then next year, during the budget process, we will put this item into the budget ordinance so that every year it gets a look from council and approved at, at that time.
Questions for anyone? Okay, so with that, I have a motion. Do I have a motion from you, Larry?
Yes, you have a motion.
To approve with the idea that it will go into budget session next year? At this point in time, the resolution will be approved only for one year, one year only. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lucy. Any public comment? Veronica, did you want to add anything?
No, I'm good. Thank you very much.
All right. With that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero. We will now move into the regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appellants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. The first item on the regular agenda is item A, which is Consider Resolution Designating the Number of Votes to be Cast for Each Nominee for the Board of Directors of Tom Green County Appraisal District. And Heather, you're on.
Good morning. Okay, as y'all remember, a couple of weeks ago.
Talk louder, please.
Okay, council nominated five individuals for the Tom Green County Appraisal District. All of the other agencies that contribute to the appraisal district have returned their nominations as well, with five individuals on the final ballot for vote, which were the same nominees that you council nominated a couple of weeks ago. So at this time, the city has 1,349 votes to put towards those five candidates that are on the ballot. You can allocate your votes however you wish. In the past, we have done where each council member gets a certain amount of votes. This year, that would end up being each council member having 192 votes with a remainder of five votes that y'all can allocate either one to each candidate or however you wish. Or alternatively, you can distribute the votes evenly amongst the candidates. With the four remaining votes, distribute again as you wish. Or you can give all of your votes to one candidate. It's really just up to your discretion.
I would recommend that we take the 1,349 available votes and divide by five, giving everybody 269 votes. And then with four left over, somebody can throw it in wherever they want.
Let's see if you can have four.
So Lucy, who would you like to give those extra four to?
Let's see. Candy.
All right. So we have a motion to divide the 1,349 votes by five, giving 269 votes per person with the addition of, four additional votes going to Candy.
Second.
A second by Harry. Any public comment? With none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero. We will move on to item B, which is Consider Resolution Approving a Request for a Variance to Allow the Sell of Alcoholic Beverages Beer and Wine at 2635 Johnson Street, a property within 300 feet of a public school. And Erin, you are on.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Erin Benoy, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. Got a property here at 2635 South Johnson Street. It's a request for a distance variance to the rules that we have in our commerce ordinance. Currently, you're supposed to be 300 feet property line to property line from a public secondary school. So this is on Johnson Street. Across the street is the Glenn Middle School and the San Angelo Stadium, as well as Pace School. Now, they are a significant distance away from the actual buildings and where kids are at, and so that's why this is coming forward. It is a zoned neighborhood commercial, which would allow a restaurant use with a bar as a secondary use, not a primary use. It is in District Five, Karen Hesse Smith, in the ASU College Hills neighborhood. On this screen here, you see this white building. It's actually just, and I'm not sure if it'll circle or not, but it's, this property that says Grigsby's, that is up for lease. They are wanting to come in and put a little bistro restaurant in there that has lunch and dinner, and then has a, a bar that's associated with it that's just for use at that facility. It would not allow, the zoning would not allow it to turn into just a bar-type activity. It would only be a restaurant as a primary use, and then the bar as a secondary use. So again, that zoning allows the city to check that out any time that some new tenant may come in and request a new TABC license. We are able to review that through our city processes and approve or deny based on the zoning. Again, the standard distance is 300 feet, and in this case, it's 100 feet. And I don't know if you guys have been out to the property. Obviously, the big, large area there to the right of the screen is Glenn Middle School. You can see the distance across the street is literally 100 feet property line to property line. But if you look at the distance to just the school, about 770 feet. And the distance to the front doors of the school is 1,500 feet. So that's for y'all's consideration. I do know that the applicant is here to speak as well, just to kind of give you an idea of what they're looking at doing. It is a for-lease property, and we have done this in the past for ASU itself, that they had a request about a year and a half ago to do things on their campus, and they also have the same situation. And you think about this property, it reaches all the way down to Knickerbocker to the south. And there are properties across there that have licenses as well. And they are within that same distance, but are a significant distance away from the schools. That I have.
Karen, would you like to make comment? It's in your district?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sure you've done it, but just for the record, can you confirm that parking has been determined to be adequate for that use and would not be on the street, for example? We would want them off that busy street. And I don't know if that, that's a city easement behind that building. Is that correct?
Yes, there is a city easement behind the building. There is also an alternative parking that was approved with that building when they reconstructed it about three years ago. And you can see that the angled parking that comes into the, what we would call the right-of-way has been allowed. And so we have checked that for adequacy for that type of facility, based on the numbers that they've given us, that they would have adequate parking. It would not allow a drive-through under the neighborhood commercial, so they couldn't add a drive-through. That was one of our major concerns. So a drive-through would not be allowed. But pull-up parking and food to go could be done, just not a drive-through.
Would the applicant like to come forward and share with us her vision for this restaurant bar?
Good morning. My name is Brittany Davis. I'm actually the applicant's representative. I'm a realtor with ERA Real Estate. So thank you so much for hearing our case this morning. After a lot of consideration in different locations within the San Angelo area, we found this building. We felt that the location being close to ASU, close to downtown, close to Santa Rita and other amenities within our city was a great location. As far as alcohol sales go, that was something that we definitely addressed. I just kind of wanted to break it down in a few spots first before I got into that. As far as parking goes, the old Frontier Building has adequate parking. If we were approved, we were going to talk to them about doing a joint parking agreement over there. The owner that is currently selling or leasing the building has allowed us to proceed as far as coming to meet with y'all and discuss. This is an option. After, again, a lot of research on potential locations, traffic counts, you know, easability, and just where we felt that the majority of people would actually come and visit a restaurant, again, we kind of zoned in on this location. If anyone's driven around San Angelo, looked for a potential business opportunity, other than vacant buildings downtown, unfortunately, we're very limited as far as where, you know, those restaurants can go. If you go towards southwest side of town, your Sam's, where all that development's happening, you're looking at $10,000 to $15,000 a month in rent. And that adds up, you know, and easily can cut into profits. And for a new startup restaurant, it's just not doable. So, so with that being said, budget and all things considered, this was a great location. We've looked at the fire egress, et cetera, the owners allowing us to do whatever necessary means we need to, to the building. So with that, then we get into our alcohol sales. And I understand the adoption of the rule. And I understand having, you know, San Angelo ISD close to the property, you know, that will raise some concerns. Now, with that being said, San Angelo ISD is a very large property. It goes all the way to Knickerbocker, and then both, it touches both Johnson and Jackson. Couple of things to consider would be the fact that Rosa's is allowed to sell beer and wine, and that is not that far. You know, if we actually, you know, and I think that's where the hangup has been for the applicant and also for city staff, is the fact that there is such a gray area in the ruling. Is it curb-to-curb? Is it door-to-door? Other cities such as Abilene, they do door-to-door, which tends to make more sense. If we're doing curb-to-curb, we are limiting potential business growth in our community, and that's what we're striving for. So Rosa's is a great example. If we look across the street, we have stadium lanes. And within stadium lanes, Napoli's is there. Well, before Napoli's, you know, that was Zentner's Daughter. Now, after they shut down, you would think with the TABC license, it was only for that restaurant. But the city allowed another restaurant to go back into that location due to the grandfathered law. The bowling alley, again, catty corner. So we're looking at a lot of businesses that are really very close, but had, you know, been granted the permission prior to the adoption of the 300-foot. So then I went and did a lot more research and found out, you know, back in 2017, 2018, before this was adopted into our code book, that the old Cork and Pig, which is now where Firestone is, was 119 feet if you went curb-to-curb. So we thought that that brought a valid case, that we were able to come in front of y'all and say, okay, if that was allowed five, six, seven years ago, why would this not be? So I did print some handouts.
So, wait. No, as long as the city attorney has them, you're good. I can share with Lucy if you don't. Yeah.
So on the first page, it references the previous address of the Cork and Pig there, which was 2201 Knickerbocker. Now is Firestone. Again, the second page just references that it was about 119 feet if we went curb-to-curb.
I feel bad for that middle picture, probably. They didn't survive.
Well, finding some pictures from 2017 were a little challenging. And then if we actually flip to the last page, what I did is, you know, just logically thinking, you know, if we were allowing that ruling to come in from door-to-door, how would somebody actually proceed to the property? Would they be going as the crow flies, or would they be walking a pedestrian path? And so that's how that was measured out. So we went from the front of the old Grigsby's building, across the street, down Johnson, and then across to the stadium.
You'll need to wrap up your comments.
Sorry. Okay. So basically, with that being said, if we were going door-to-door from the school or from the stadium, that pushes us to over 1,300 square feet from the property, essentially.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
With that, do I have any questions from council? Yes, Larry?
That vacant area out there, does, does it have any purpose connected with the school?
Well, it is owned by the school. We did reach out to the school, and they said they did not have an issue with this. They really gave us no, no explanation of what they may have there in the future. But it is school land, and so they could propose something in the future. We just don't know what that would be.
Currently, it doesn't provide any room for PE or anything else. It's just vacant area.
There's a practice field.
I think there's some athletic practice field there, but that would be the only known use as of right now.
Thank you.
Any other? Harry, you said you did.
Certainly. I have a sixth grader that goes to school at Glenn. She gets out on the south side of the campus. Good number of those people, young people that don't get picked up, walk right directly to that shopping center, and that's where they get picked up from their parents. I think the idea of a restaurant there is a great idea. My concern is that you've got a lot of teenagers there, and yourself are serving alcohol. Seventh graders get picked up on the east side of the campus, and the eighth graders get picked up on the north side of the campus. But those sixth graders come right across there. So you've got four or 500 kids coming across that, that area every afternoon, Monday through Friday.
I would say the following, that number one, the alcohol is served within the complex, within the building. It's not outside the building. That, number one. And then number two, the reality is the following. Many parents take their kids out to dinner and order a cocktail, beer, or wine as their kids are sitting there dining with them. So that's not unusual, whether the fifth graders or sixth graders, they've been around parents who've dined and ordered alcohol, beer, or wine. And then the last thing I would say is the following, is there's an obligation to check IDs. And if the ID does not say you can serve them beer, wine, or alcohol, there's not going to be beer, wine, or alcohol served to that young child. So for me, this is, is, there's tremendous distance between that building and the school. And I would support the opening of that restaurant. And I think it will enhance that community area. And again, I don't think that those kids, it's not like they have not. And again, I don't think that those kids, it's not like they have not seen alcohol, beer, wine served in their life, in their home or in a restaurant. So I don't think it's going to influence them in a negative way, in my opinion.
I apologize. Can I make one?
Yes.
Just, and I apologize, I missed this. As far as type of location, or type of restaurant, it's not a sports bar or anything like that. It is going to be a higher end, similar to the Wharf Cork and Pig, Miss Hattie's, you know, serving a more prestigious menu, et cetera. So if that, you know, is something to take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further public comments? None? Then may I have a motion for approval?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Karen has a motion. A second by Lucy. Further public comment? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes seven, zero. We will move on to item C, which is the first reading of public hearing of an ordinance amending Chapter 10 Traffic Control Article 10.03, Operation of Motor Vehicles, Section 10.03.091, One-Way Streets and Alley's of the Code of Ordinances to assign a portion of Howe Street as one-way during designated hours and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Patrick, you are on.
All right. Good morning, Mayor, Council. A while back, staff was approached by TLCA to help them with their traffic issues and congestion during, mainly during drop-off and pickup of the school. The school has grown, their numbers of students and enrollment has increased to the amount, to the effect that during drop-off and pickup times and even throughout the day, there is, they're running into an issue with, with traffic flow and just making sure that it's efficient and safe. We sat down with them and we worked through a process and we came up with a one-way designation on Howe Street as a solution that would work both for the campus and for the surrounding neighborhood, as well as something that the city felt like would, would not impact negatively traffic. So what, what we came up with is a one-way designation from the access road of the Loop down to Freeland Avenue, right there in front of TLCA. We stopped it at Freeland so that we wouldn't impact that home that's right there next to it, so that they could go either direction on Howe Street and access their, their home as well as the surrounding neighborhood. So we limited it as much as we could, but still ensured that traffic wasn't trying to cut across one another and back up and, and create a safety and efficiency problem there. So with your approval, this will go into effect. Our traffic operations division will install all the signage that's necessary for that and TLCA will be responsible for reimbursing the city for all of those costs, including equipment costs, material costs and labor costs.
I get very concerned when we do things like this, the confusion, people who are not used to being a one-way street unless there's really unbelievable signage and directing, very nervous about that. And then what happens if there's activities at that school that start at 6 o'clock at night? Is it one-way, is it not? I mean, I just find this to be concerning and confusing and that's all.
I understand. The one-way designation will be during school days from 7 o'clock in the morning to 4 o'clock. Every sign that designates the one-way is required to have that as an additional sign right underneath so it communicates to all traffic if you're within those timeframes.
You know, people don't read signs, you know that.
I can't force them to read it. But we can do what we can to communicate it. But yes, it's up to them to, to observe the, the warning signs.
Harry, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, ma'am. There are several elementary schools in San Angelo Independent School District that we've done the same thing for. Fort Concho, probably four or five years ago, I had the opportunity to, to work with staff in providing one-way for these hours in front of their school. I know Glenn Elementary has the same thing, Bel Air Elementary has the same thing. So I don't think it's much different than what we've done in the past. You're right, a lot of people do not read the signs, but they will get used to it because I can guarantee you, the police officers will take it.
Yes, please, Larry.
How's fire and police, what's their opinion on this?
So the fire department doesn't use that road as their access point. Their, their, their station is further back off of TLCA ways, so that's not, not an issue for them. Even if they did, they would be coming down into that neighborhood through that, through the one-way, via the one-way. So PD is, we didn't necessarily reach out to them specifically on that, but like Harry suggested, it's, we have one-ways all over town and that's regulated as they're normally are. So usually, it's the parent traffic and, and the school district and the school there that are, that kind of enforces that through their communications. And I know that TLCA is here, they are, they did acknowledge that they would be communicating that through, through their social media and through their communication with all of their parents and students as well. So this will be very well broadcast and very well disseminated before it goes into effect.
What happens to Freeland Avenue? Does it pick, does it end up with double the amount of traffic or what happens?
We do suspect that there will be an increase in traffic to Freeland. Most of the traffic already, if they're going down that way, continues down Howe Street and exits out onto Arden Road already. So it's just those few people that are trying to turn left onto Howe Street to get up to the access road. Those would be the ones that are accessing Freeland. So there'll be a nominal increase, we expect, of traffic onto Freeland. But again, it's those that are, we're trying to turn left onto Howe to get to the access road would be the ones that would be using Freeland to, to get back to that location.
Harry, Larry, further questions or comments?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Karen, did you have one? Anyone else make a comment? Okay, so is there a motion for approval?
So move.
A motion by Harry, a second by Larry. And the public comment opportunity exists right now. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you.
It looks like we are moving into closed session. Am I missing something? No?
Ma'am, that's it.
Okay. So executive session on the provision of government code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirements, that meetings be open under the following sections. A, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Regarding Mark III Border Patrol Hangar Paving Contract. Did I get that right, Jeremy? Okay. We will now be moving from here to closed session. On this election day, November the 7th, this meeting is called back to order with nothing to announce following our executive session, so we will move in to consider approving various board nominations. And there is one, which is the Airport Advisory Committee for Sam Strahan, SMD5, to a first term ending October 2025. And may I have a motion for that approval?
So move.
Tommy? Second by Harry. Any questions concerning this appointment? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved or nomination is approved. Are there any announcements of consideration for future agenda items? Let me just make an announcement that our next meeting will be on November the 21st. I think, Tommy, you said you have a problem being?
I'm out of town for Thanksgiving already.
You'll be out of town for that, but the rest of us will all be here for that meeting on the 21st. And with that, may I have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
So moved. Second, all those in favor adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Motion passes.